Good evening. I am calling the October 17th meeting of the Amherst County Board of Supervisors to Order. The time is 7:06 PM. The first thing we need to do is to approve our agenda. And Board, if it pleases you, I'd like to propose an amendment that we add new Section 11, Closed Session pursuant to Section 2.2371-11A8 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by Amherst County regarding a monument on county property. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved as amended.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. If you would, please stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Wade. Our Father and our God, Lord, we come before you as your humble servants. Lord, we just ask you to give this board wisdom. Father, we just pray for an understanding that can only come from you. Father, we pray for peace in our nation and our world. Lord, we ask you to bless all of our county employees, no matter what role they serve. They are important to us, Lord, and we thank you for them. And Father, we thank you for our citizens and pray a blessing on them. And we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving on, we will open up citizen comment. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? All right, hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. The first item is a special exception request of Matthew, is it Wise or Wees?
Wees.
Wees? Mr. Creasy.
Chairman, Board, good to see you all. As you indicated, this is a request by Matthew Wees for a special exception in the R2 General Residential District. The purpose of this request is to allow a short-term tourist-friendly dwelling at 430 River Road as seen before you. And it's also known as Tax Map Number 160-A-6. It's roughly .6 acres large with a single-family dwelling located on it, and is served by public water and sewer, and is in the designated growth boundary for both. The surrounding area generally has the same characteristics as the requested parcel. The property is surrounded by residentially-zoned property, which can be seen in the staff report, and with vacant land to the east and south, and a single-family dwelling to the north, which is the same owner, by the way. So 448 is also owned by Mr. and Ms. Wees. The recommended conditions can be found in the item summary. Are there any questions for staff at this time? And there's a recommended motion, too.
Okay, is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of the petition? If you'd come forward and state your name and district, please.
Hey, my name's Matt Wees. District, I wish I knew, five. District five, thank you. The homeowner with my wife and kids. We live in the house right next door. We love our property. We have beautiful views of the river. As you see, beautiful property, and it's just something we're excited to share with other people. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wees. Board, do you have any questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve special exception request 2023-428 with the recommended conditions by the Planning Commission.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Congratulations. Good luck with your project. Moving on to Amherst County Comprehensive Plan update. I believe this is the Madison Heights Master Plan, and it'll be presented by Mr. Creasy and Mr. Gordon from EPR. Correct?
Yes, Chairman, Board, thank you. And just as a reminder, there is a presentation here, but this is a public hearing, and there are recommended motions that can be found in your item summary for this. But I am pleased to bring before you tonight an update to the county's 2007 to 2027 comprehensive plan. The purpose of this update is to include the Madison Heights Conceptual Master Plan as Appendix B to the recently updated comp plan. This master plan was an initiative first approved by you all through our CIP process. Since then, county staff has worked with EPR. The agency contracted to draft the master plan. A steering committee, they included county department heads and county leadership from the Planning Commission, EDA, and Board of Supervisors, and most importantly, Amherst County citizens. Through the involvement and outreach of these stakeholders, the plan before you was able to be created.
Pardon me?
County staff would like to thank you all, the board, the Planning Commission, the steering committee, the numerous agencies and the departments that provided information, insight, and data to EPR, and of course, the backbone of our county, the citizens, for their support and involvement with this process. And as you mentioned, I'd like to welcome Mr. Todd Gordon with EPR. He will be presenting the Madison Heights Master, Conceptual Master Plan.
All right. Thank you, Tyler. Thank you all very much for having me. Make sure I can make that go. I'm Todd Gordon with planning and engineering firm EPR in Charlottesville. We've been working on this project for approximately 18 months. I believe you have a draft document, hopefully, in your packet, but I've been asked to be relatively brief, but would like to show you a little bit of what is contained in the conceptual master plan for Madison Heights. All right. So you all commissioned this master plan to look at future growth in Madison Heights. There were some goals that were expressed, to give Madison Heights a sense of place and destination, to beautify the 29 corridor as it passes through Madison Heights, and to support the local economy and enhance property values. So this plan takes a, you can see in the map, a slightly broader view of Madison Heights than, you know, the Old Town section. So this plan takes into consideration everything from Amalon Road south between 29 Business and 29 Bypass. So it's a rather large area that we had the opportunity to look at. This project looks at the area in yellow, but also takes a closer look at two areas in blue. First, the Central Virginia Training Center property, which has its own recently completed master plan, as well as the other core area property. That's where you'll find your recently approved Madison Heights Town Center project and some other large vacant tracks nearby. This plan was very much a team effort. Tyler mentioned some of these things, but in addition to our firm, EPR, we also worked with landscape architects at LPDA, also based in Charlottesville, and economists at RKG. They're in Alexandria. In addition to those, the advisory committee that was appointed to guide this project was great to work with at all, at all steps. It included the county administrator, community development staff, Mr. Martin representing the board, Ms. Jones representing the Planning Commission, and staff and board members from the Economic Development Authority and Service Authority. Also, a key player in the team was the citizens of the county. We made community input a big feature of this plan. We conducted several engagement opportunities to try to hear from people what they were looking for in Madison Heights and in the future of the county. There was a survey conducted, which asked questions about general needs, vision for the future, goals for the area. There was also an interactive mapping exercise that was available for a couple of months that allowed people to show us where they saw traffic issues, potential new transportation connections, potential redevelopment, other safety issues, and so on. Beyond that, we had held seven focus group meetings, which gave us the opportunity to talk to property owners. We spoke to business groups, churches, school officials, and many more to get a feel for the public opinion. Once the plan was drafted, we held an open house to present the plan to the public. That was held at Manellison Middle School in the project area. We got great turnout and received really great and really positive feedback. So three large elements of the plan, three big sections, that I wanted to briefly show you what was inside each. Those plan elements are the area-wide plan, the core area plan, which is specific to the area near the Madison Heights Town Center that I mentioned, and then the implementation plan. The area-wide plan to begin includes some economic analysis that looks at growth and residential demand in the Madison Heights area through the year 2045. It also includes the area-wide land use plan. So as an adopted part of the comprehensive plan, this map would serve as an extension and a sort of finer-grain future land use map specific to Madison Heights. Shown on the future, on the area-wide land use plan are 11 land use types. So the location of potential residential development, potential commercial development, institutional, industrial, and so on, with some guiding language about density and the character of plan development. Also included in the area-wide plan are transportation plans, both for vehicular transportation and bicycle and pedestrian transportation, with an eye toward planning for proper movement of people and goods and traffic as the area grows. Okay. So contained within the plan are specific transportation recommendations and access management recommendations. These are consistent with VDOT's 2022 corridor study for South Amherst Highway, again with the goal of minimizing traffic and maximizing safety as this area of Amherst County grows in the future. The core area plan, which I mentioned, is that area of large vacant parcels that the existing comprehensive plan designates as an urban development area, that you now see some development activity in through the Madison Heights Town Center project. The core area saw some specific study, including looking very closely at the topography, existing land use, slopes, and so on. Sort of an interesting condition that the rezoning for the Madison Heights Town Center was approved while this project was going on. So from that point, we included that project as an existing condition and moved forward with planning for surrounding properties and how they might develop in concert. So you can see the illustrated map that shows kind of a glimpse of one example of the type of development that the master plan encourages for the area and for other parts of Madison Heights, a mix of uses, a mix of residential types, open space, trail connections, and more. So this, of course, is a concept, and ultimately, this property will develop based on the wishes of the property owner and approvals granted by the county. Finally, the implementation section of the plan. This plan includes steps that can be taken over the short term to begin to usher in the master plan vision. Several elements in here. One of those elements is gateways and signage. We looked at two gateway locations, one at the north end of the corridor and one at the south end of the corridor, and proposed designs for signage and landscaping to announce Madison Heights as a place and make it clear to those driving through that they have arrived in this location. We also looked at corridor beautification examples for three additional sites as example sites where trees and landscaping can be used to improve the appearance and property values in the corridor. Those are shown as sort of illustrated views. All right. So that may be a brief, perhaps too brief overview of this master plan, which altogether, including its appendices, runs to 180 pages or so. In those appendices, you'll find additional economic analysis and data, as well as sort of fuller accounting of the public input, survey responses, and so on. So definitely worth looking at and bookmarking. But this has been a great project for us to work on. We really appreciated the opportunity. Very interesting for a couple of reasons. First, as I mentioned, that in the process of imagining mixed-use master plan-type development in Madison Heights, that type of development began to emerge and apply for rezoning. So it sort of took hold during the planning process through the Town Center property and a couple of other proposals. Second, because we found such overwhelming positive feedback when we held our open house and presented the drafts and the graphics that are contained in this plan. We hardly heard a negative word from the residents of the area, that they were really excited about the opportunity to see this area grow, become potentially more of a, less of a corridor and more of a town. Particularly, they were interested in seeing commercial-type development that, you know, gives them places to shop and dine and entertaining and so on at some point in the future. So I certainly thank you for your attention. I'm also happy to answer any questions or receive any feedback that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Board? Okay, if we do, we'll call you back up.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of the Madison Heights Master Plan? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the plan? Hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board, any questions? I have a few. So I think overall, the plan is good. I think, I'm just giving you my thoughts, okay? I think it's, it focuses too heavy on the Patel development and the Training Center property. If you look at the section about zoning ordinance amendments, you know, the only thing it talks about is T and D regs, where the two, the big T and D that is most likely to happen in the near future, that's done, approved, it's moving forward. So I'm not sure what those types of zoning ordinance amendments are going to do for the overall improvement of mass and heights proper, right? So I would have liked for more recommendations to be given on that. The other thing is, I believe you had a recommendation for a roundabout at Amalon and 29, but VDOT said that that's highly unlikely to happen. So if we know it's unlikely to happen, why did we put it in the plan, right? Yeah, I read it. Mr. Bryant, I'd kind of like to know what's going to be the first steps in implementing it. Are we going to sit here and wait for VDOT to do these things? Or is county going to be more forthright in implementing certain things? What can we do? Because if we're just going to sit and wait on VDOT, then this plan will be implemented with the exception of the Patel track, all right?
Yep, great question. Thank you, Todd. Thank you for being here. So let me first say, I really appreciated the opportunity for seeing the citizen process. And Mr. Gordon, what you said to me stood out, too, about Manellison Middle School and all the positive feedback we had. That really stood out to me, being at that event and having the opportunity for citizens to speak to that process. Mr. Martin, in terms to your question about VDOT, what we felt like as staff, this would give us guidance when we're applying for smart-scale applications. So we, I think you know this, we were the, one of the most successful localities applying for smart-scale applications. We got three out of four requests funded. So to us, this cements the direction of things that we should be looking to do and applications we should be looking to put in place. So it gives us the Michael Baker study analysis that was part of what EPR put in this plan, was their studies, and it gives us guidance because if you adopted it, the comp plan would say, this is something we want to go forward with. So it would give us some guidance. The staff is what you want us to apply for. So does that answer your question? The beautification committee has also taken elements out of this. I know Mr. Creasy and Mr. Young shared some of these concepts with the beautification committee, and they want to also start implementing some of those things. So we're already beginning thinking of things that we can do to start implementing this plan. It also gives us guidance on land use decisions, on when applicants and property owners come to us and they say, what does the county want to see? Not only do we have some policies and procedures in place, but we would have maps and future land use to go off of. So does that help answer your question?
Yes. One more question. So if you look at the population projections for Amherst, we're very flat. Obviously, you know, with the T and D that's being developed, with some other townhome projects, some other things that are coming online, I see the population probably increasing somewhat. I'm sure we all get on Facebook, right? So there's been a lot of discussion about schools, right? And I believe some people commented in the public meetings, which were extraordinary, by the way, I mean, you guys did an excellent job with those, about school capacity. Has the school system weighed in on this plan?
So the school system was involved as a stakeholder as we worked on this, and they provided us with, you know, student generation figures. There's similar figures that were used to assess the Madison Heights Town Center property. So the school system is keeping an eye on, you know, development and the number of students who might be produced by development. So they're certainly aware, and that should certainly be taken into account as you see development applications.
Any immediate needs on the forefront?
They didn't express to us a dire concern over these, over the proposed project at the Town Center, but it's definitely something to monitor. You know, projects like this are talking about, you know, 1,000 homes, and that's a lot, and that's going to produce a lot of children, certainly.
Dr. Wells that I met today, and we're going to plan a meeting, we said in the next couple of weeks, to start going over projections and how it will impact their schools. So we're planning a meeting. We don't have it scheduled yet, but we said today we would plan something in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. I don't want to be the only one speaking. Board, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'll say a few things. I think Mr. Brown was right about what he said with the involvement in the community. I know there was also polls and things like that that could be done, and a lot of people utilize those. This is conceptual. It's a plan. The free market dictates a lot of what we see, and I think it will continue to do that. I mean, of course, we can put this all on paper, but it's always a fluid situation. I think we all understand that. But certainly, the work that went into it was, I commend you all for it. It was a big item to take on, and of course, we'll be able to use it, like Mr. Bryant said, on some of the issues with the mapping and so forth. But we certainly do appreciate the work. But I'll reiterate it again. It's merely a plan. It's conceptual, and things will change in the future as far as, you know, the free market will dictate. Whether 1,200 homes are built within the next couple of years or the next 20 years, it's hard to say because mortgage rates are at all-time high. There's things that could happen. So of course, we're going to keep an eye on what does happen. I know that the school system has actually been down in enrollment for probably the last 15 to 20 years. So I think we even closed the school. So hopefully, this will help reinvigorate it and bring more people into the community. So I appreciate the work that you've done, and certainly, you couldn't control the Town Center. That came along as you were doing it, as you stated. So I mean, it's, we were heavy on that because we were all looking at that as a potential growth area. So that's out of your control as far as that happens. So we appreciate what you've done, Tyler, and everyone else that was involved in the plan.
Very good. Ms. Tucker?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Wade?
I just want to echo what he, what Mr. Pew said. Great work. So I was there at Manellison. It was a great turnout. Really enjoyed that, seeing folks come out and share their appreciation for this and what they kind of want to see happen in the future. Again, like he said, it is a plan, just like the Training Center plan. It's kind of guidance for where we want to see the county go, not necessarily what will happen. But appreciate all the hard work. So thank you.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I move that the board approve the update to the 2007-2027 Amherst County Comprehensive Plan by incorporating the Madison Heights Conceptual Master Plan as Appendix B.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Motion on the floor by Mr. Pew? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Very good. Thank you for your work on that. Okay, next thing on the agenda is Ordinance 2023-6 Revenue Sharing. Mr. Creasy.
Yes, sir. This ordinance is the exact same that you saw at your first read earlier this month. As a refresher, this ordinance is in regards to utility-scale solar farms. Currently, we tax them through our MNT, our Machinery and Tools Tax. This ordinance would allow the county to do a couple of things, but mostly it's to allow the county and a potential utility-scale solar farm to go into a revenue-sharing agreement in what's roughly $1,400 per megawatt. And it also allows the county to go into a siting agreement, which then the county can then receive. then receive tax revenue from either both the MNT and revenue share, whichever is greater. So it's a added benefit for the county. So other than that, are there any questions for staff at this time?
I have one question. Just, what is the genesis of this? How did this actually come about? Does this something you all as staff looked at, or is this something you?
This is through state code. State code, if a solar farm, and Mr. Popovich, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if a solar farm over five megawatts intends to come into a county, they must go through a siting agreement process. And the only way in order to go through that process is if a county has a revenue share ordinance in place.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Creasy is correct. And really, all this is really doing is providing the county with an alternative method of obtaining additional revenue from these solar facilities. It's, it's all a function of, of size of the facility. When you're dealing with just the MNT tax, you're going to get X amount of dollars, but if you talk about revenue sharing based on the increased number of wattage, you may be able to obtain additional revenues. And so it just gives you an additional avenue to, to, to collect potential revenue. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Popovich, but the, the way the taxing on these large-scale utility projects work is, I believe it's like 25% for so many years, and then it goes to another percentage.
Right.
So essentially, we're not able to tax them at the full rate. So the revenue sharing agreement allows us to try and recoup some of that.
Exactly. There's, there's a depreciation schedule over a period of time. Yes, sir.
But it is also, my understanding, that this in no way ties the hands of the board to approve or deny any future facilities that may become before this board.
Absolutely correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Creasy.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is anyone present that would like to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board, what's your pleasure?
I move that the board approve ordinance 2023-6.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Very good. Moving on to the consent agenda. Board, is there a motion on the consent agenda? So quite a bit on it. Is there anything you need clarification on? If not, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, very good. Moving on to the county administrator's report. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. There's three things I'll point out that are, that are worth noting. The Central Virginia Training Center, we did hold that one developer showcase. We are planning a second developer showcase. We don't have a date yet, but I wanted you to know that that's in the works. We will continue. Our first one was very successful, we had a great turnout. We will plan a, a, a second one and cast an even larger net, but I wanted to make you aware of that. The number, the second thing is, I'll also bring to your attention, is we have held planning meetings with engineers for the pre-designed design to produce bid packets for the construction of Cell 2 for the landfill. So we're working on that from a staff level. And then finally, we've had some conversations with broadband providers about looking at additional, the VATI grants that are through the state of Virginia. They're putting out a round for localities to apply to fill gaps and holes. And as we've learned, and we had an example recently, where there's some citizens that have some gaps or holes in areas that may be in a certain portion of the county, but are, but have areas that can't be filled. So VATI is encouraging localities to, to apply for additional funds to fill any gaps that may be out there. So we're working with our local providers to see what funds we could leverage for that. So just an update on that. And if you have any questions, but that's what I'd call your attention to.
Board? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Moving on to boards and commissions committees, considering an at-large vacancy to the Economic Development Authority, Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. So the term of Patrick Drayer for the Economic Development Authority was set to expire January the 18th of 2024. Mr. Drayer submitted his resignation letter on January the 10th of 2023. Staff has sent Steve to a letter of interest on September the 23rd from Christine Vrumen, and the Economic Development Authority recommended approval in selecting Ms. Vrumen to serve the remainder of Mr. Drayer's term and a four-year term starting January the 18th. So his term ends January the 18th of 2024, so only a few months away. But one of the things we pointed out in one of your recommended motions, if you choose to do so, number one would be to appoint her to serve the remainder of his term and the four-year term starting January the 18th, 2024. So any questions for staff?
Board? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say that Ms. Vrumen and her husband, Dennis, own Anquita Ridge Vineyard, which is in the western end of the county, up Franklin Creek. And if you've never been there, even if you're not a wine drinker, you need to go. It is absolutely stunning. You get out on the overlook, and you look, and you can see the Rockbridge County, it's beautiful. They have made a commitment to this county. What they have built there has drawn people from all over the world to come to their vineyard. They've won numerous awards. Next November, they are hosting a wine tour that goes through five or six different countries on a, on a boat. Anyway, I say all of this to tell you that they're not just scratching in the dirt kind of people. They are the kind of folks that we have recruited and wanted to come to this county, and I'm so glad to not only call them neighbors, but to call them friends. So I would move that the board appoint Ms. Christine Vrumen to serve the remainder of Mr. Drayer's term and a four-year term starting January the 18th, 2024.
There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Please give her our congratulations and thank her for her willingness to serve. Moving on to the county attorney's report, Mr. Popovich?
I have nothing at this time, sir.
Very good. Moving on to citizen comment. Is anyone present that would like to address the board? Yes, sir. If you come forward and state your name and district.
Good evening, Board. I'm Sam Soger, District 2. Thanks for having me. It's a brief meeting. I figured I'd come speak to you election day is three weeks from now. And I am a candidate for House District 53, which includes all of Amherst, Mosin Nelson, and half of Bedford Counties. I, you know, I try to go to most of these board of supervisors' meetings, I try to go to most school board meetings, I live in town, town council meetings, volunteer with the sheriff's department. They call me the Amherst man. They call me PTO dad. And I just want to let you all know, I see a lot of anger on both sides, right and left. I think folks on the right are angry, and they're justified in their anger. I think there's folks on the left that are angry, and they feel justified in their anger. And then I think there's just folks that are angry about their car payments, or they're angry about their job or a relationship, and that the issue is the anger. You know, and I think what happens is that we have politicians that exploit that anger just to maintain their own power and influence, and that, that's not good for us. We had a state senator who came to a meeting several months ago and unfortunately said something to you all along the lines of, you know, this money for the schools is what you need, but I can't do anything about it because of my political party affiliation, therefore, my hands are tied. I thought that was kind of ridiculous, and I think it was pretty awesome of you all to come together and despite some ideological differences about tax revenue, and hey, I don't think the tax is necessarily needed to go up, but I think the point was that you all needed, you all came together and voted unanimously for Amherst. And that was, that was like totally awesome, you know? And that's the type of representatives I think that we do need, and that's the type of representative, if I were to go to Richmond, that's what it would all be about, never about towing a party line, and only about pure loyalty to our district. So thanks so much for serving like you all do, and see you all around. Thanks. Good night.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else present that would like to address the board? All right. Hearing, seeing none, citizen comment. Portion is closed. Are there any matters from the board of supervisors? Mr. Pugh, Ms. Tucker, Mr. Wade?
No.
I have none. So is there a motion to go into closed session?
Move to enter into closed session pursuant to Section 2.23711A8 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by Amherst County regarding a monument on county property.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. We're in closed session.
Go ahead. I'm not going to slide back and hit you.
Yeah, so we said.
Oh, Lord.
How are you?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right.
Check your P and how you doing?
Saving on my energy, just our state president.
I know. Yeah.[1252.16]
Go ahead. I'm not gonna slide back and hit you.
So he says.
Oh, Lord.
How are you?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right.
Checking on my energy, just started today.
I know.
I'm glad.
Go ahead.
I'm not gonna slide back and hit you.
So he says.
Oh, Lord.
How are you?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right.
Saving on my energy, just started today.
I know.
I'm glad.
Go ahead.
I'm not gonna slide back and hit you.
So he says.
Oh, Lord.
How are you?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right.
Saving on my energy, just started today.
I know.
Go ahead.
I'm not gonna slide back and hit you.
So he says.
Oh, Lord.
How are you?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right.
Checking on my energy, just started today.
I know.
Go ahead.
I'm not gonna slide back and hit you.
So he says.
All right, is there a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
All right, motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote, okay, we need the, that official motion.
Move that the Amherst Board of Supervisors certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing this closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
Okay, and this is a roll call vote. Mr. Pugh?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
And Mr. Martin votes aye. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Well, that's right.
Point first?
Yeah, that's right.